Well, I was impressed that you had a phone.
Yeah.
And then I'm like, oh, I thought it probably.
Every time I turn around.
Our call is town of our board selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Uh, number one roll call. Led Olson, Don Young, Leslie Dyer, Pam Alley, Elizabeth Bunker, Marjorie Stratton. Tom Anthony is absent at this point. Number two approve agenda, so moved.
Second.
On favor. Three minutes approve the minutes from the May fourteenth, twenty twenty four meeting.
So moved.
Okay.
All favor. Number four proven sign treasures forty eight.
So moved.
Second.
On favor. Communications, A letter from Patrick Traynor. Marjorie.
So I could give you all a copy of the letter, but I need to just do some research on it and address it and get back to him. But certainly if you all have any questions about it.
I think my biggest question was, is this something that? We? Can? Is is this our purview?
Normally it would be the um. Code enforcement officer to send out notices of violation if there is a violation. So I think what I need to do is just do some research to see if there is a violation. Talk with the code enforcement officer. Um, we talked a little bit about it today, but it was just very busy today. Um, a lot on our plate and um. We had staff that was out for various reasons. Anyway, so. Uh, I just need. On that.
Okay.
So we'll table it till next next meeting.
Well, he addressed it to the select board, so um we felt it was important to bring it to you as a communication that was addressed to the board of selectmen. But um. I mean, I can report back to you. Certainly.
You know, when you find out, get some information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number six speakers from the floor. Eric.
Well, as a member of.
Could I just add one? Somebody commented to me today they couldn't hear well.
Okay.
Um, if they're listening on um Facebook. And so if you could speak up, that'd be great. Thanks.
Um, I'd just like to apologize to the board and the community for the condition of the cemeteries. They were horrible. I don't know, he just. We just fell off the face of the earth. Every cemetery had issues, bad issues. Grass not being old, weed whacked um. So very disappointed in him. Um, I had concerns earlier this year. I didn't think he started cabins when he should have. So.
This really. It's more of a personnel.
No, it's a contract, but it's.
I know that, but.
So it's my responsibility, the selectman's responsibility and the uh public works director's responsibility to uh make sure that Bruce is following through with his contract. Um, so I I spoke with Bruce this morning and uh he apologized for the Brownshead and he did go up early Memorial Day and do that one he had um. He said that he had someone that volunteered to do it. But then he didn't check it afterwards. Um, to make sure that it was done properly and he and he fully admitted that Brown's Head was not um done appropriately. Um, I didn't get any other complaints about any of the other cemeteries. So but it is uh my job and as the contract states, it's the um select board and my job and and uh. Public Works Director's job to supervise him, so. And there's a provision in the contract for uh proceeding with any kind of a warning.
That's surprising because last year he did such a good job on, at least on Cummings, I know he did an excellent job last year.
As as I said, I didn't get any other complaints other than the one that was on Facebook and from Eric Davis.
But I will say though that. From looking at Cummings. You know, we had a real bad issue this year with the ground being torn up.
Mm hmm.
I'm not sure if it's raccoons or crows or even robins, but so- something has done a number on them.
Right, but it wasn't just Brown's Head. Every cemetery, if you look at. Cabots. It's all higher than what it's supposed to be. I went to the private cemeteries where the veterans lots are supposed to be done. They weren't done. This is. The whole thing and they may not have complained to the town office, but the people who were at the cemeteries when I was there. They were pretty upset and said they had never seen it as bad as what it was.
And Cummins isn't like it was last year either at this point in time.
I did have somebody. Comment to me about them and it was before Memorial Day. And I said. I'm sure it will get done. I mean. We had a good track record last year.
Yeah.
But. I don't know what happened if it didn't get done.
Hmm.
And I've never seen and it's not public works. You know, both, but so much stuff got put in the trash can up to Brown's Head. That was all spilling over. So I think another year we probably should put two two cans because I talked to Alan Backer and he said he had been there a few days before Memorial Day and the can was basically empty.
Yeah.
So your guys had taken care of it.
It's on our regular.
Right, yeah, so I think another year maybe we'll just stick two cans there or something.
The problem being there is some of the things that we find in the trash can.
Well, that's.
I mean, the last, the two times ago, two weeks ago, um, there was part of an engine in there. Um, gas tanks, I mean, there's. Household garbage, I mean.
Oh.
You know, it's it's tough. It really is.
Um, on a positive note, we've gone, the committee working together, we've gone and cleaned up. Um, the cemetery up to Coward's Neck. And we did the one down to Beth Gilpin's property Coon's is. We've taken all the bowdowns and trees out of them. Except the very big ones at Coward's Neck. And David Wood has done a good job up to Poole's Health, getting rid of a lot of the bushes that were overgrowing that cemetery. So we have made an effort to um start on the private cemeteries. With the volunteers of the committee, so.
Well, that's that's Eric. Yeah, I do know that it had been a few complaints, but. Um, it's too late to do anything about it at that point. You know, on the weekend. Hard to get in touch with anybody. So they waited a little too long, I guess.
Well, that's what, you know, people flip the files up. And if I hadn't gone to Hall, I would have found out in the morning, but I didn't find out till four o'clock in the afternoon how bad things were.
Like, yeah, I had no idea. I mean, last year he did a great job.
Right, so I assume.
So, I mean, I what I see around town looks great, so I didn't even.
Yeah, the monument, everything.
Yeah, so I didn't even think to go. Didn't feel I even had to go out because he's always done. Great for us.
Yeah, I agree. My way. I felt the same way. I didn't, other than. The way to start here, but before I could talk to him, he did get it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's see.
Okay, anything else, Eric?
No.
Thank you. Number seven, committee and departmental reports and appointments. That would be uh A, Woodard and Kern.
Am I getting appointed?
You are ready to rock and roll, sir.
So, thank you, Brent Bridges from Woodard and Kern. I'll do a little bit of an update and then I have a. A crew next to me that is filling all the blanks that I don't fill in, so just a couple of things. So just, there's a lot of stuff that we participated in. On the end, a couple of things, just close up things. Public Works and the transfer station. We've been waiting for a while to finish the last part of. Public Works and finally the gates got expanded. One of the things we're waiting for is to put some bigger gates in there because that was causing a problem.
That's the transfer station.
The transfer station.
You said public.
What? Public Works, yeah, yeah.
It's okay.
At the transfer station, two gates, the last thing we're waiting for there was for. To come in and put those new gates in, and so those are in and I think. I haven't heard any complaints as far as, you know, having them bigger and making the training radiuses and stuff like that. At the same time, one of the last things we wanted to do at Public Works was uh put some bollards in. We did that work a way ways back. There were no bollards put in to protect the overhead doors. And so same contractor who worked on the transfer station uh gave us a price and installed bollards at Public Works and so Millie now has. Bollards at all of the doors and so you can hit the bollard before hitting the door. And so it's always good to have that, so we got a little sacrificial bollards out there. Um, and so the last thing I'll say on the transfer station is we've been working for a while and I put in updates and I continue putting updates as far as. You know, not, don't have a license for the transfer station and so we've been working on the operations manual with Millie to be able to get that completed and. Hopefully we can wrap that up so we can put that all together so you can have a license for the transfer station. As part of this is, as we do all this work, change it all, it's now. What it is, now we can take that with an operations manual and actually get you a license. And so that's the next piece on the agenda. It's been on there for a while. We've been working on it. I would say we probably haven't put it at the top of our list. It's now at the top of our list because this is. Now everything's done. It's time to be able to move that along and so you'll have a. I know you haven't felt. Like not having a license has stopped you, but it's good to have a license for the transfer station now that especially after all of what. And so I think that's all we have in public works and transfer station. Um, couple of other things that we're that we're. Not doing right now, but are going to be doing in the future uh as far as um on it, we have um. Uh, um, Marjorie had sent us on something about what permitting might be for vinyl comb, some work.
Right, that came from this.
It's like what we want to do and we'll have to get back to her, but the permitting might be to make some improvements on that culvert and blocking that off and to provide for that, so I've got. They owe you a response back on what the permitting would be on to be able to enact that, so I'll get that back to you in the next couple of weeks as far as about that my take on. Um, we're also as far as um. Looking at design efforts, you know, we also said based on the work with the water district and moving the building that we'll start in the next couple of weeks, start engaging. Design of the water district building as far as moving that, with some other things in play as far as making sure it's all set, but we'll start showing some designs of that. Um, so that's to be done. And uh I think that's about. All unless I can talk about what we talked about today.
That you want to go on to um downtown project?
So um. Two parts. Uh, the first part is on the original downtown project that was bid a month or so. We had, uh, as you know, we had one bidder. Uh, on the project, uh, Jake Barter, JBI. And we've been working with Jake to identify some areas of processes. And so to the degree that we can, uh, I think I've reported back that they're very interested in doing the work. They've got it in the schedule. They're not overwhelmed. They'd love to be able to do it this winter. And so uh but we're back and forth and still is negotiating things. There were some areas of, as I said, they were three different areas. There are areas that. We might have had to be a little more explicit as far as what we needed them to do, so then price it accordingly. There was some areas that they carried a price that maybe not have been their greatest and their best. But but they were the, they were the bidder. They didn't feel any need to necessarily shop in the pencil and get a better price. Uh, and there are some areas that collectively we want to look at and say like, maybe at that price, we can think of a different way of. Doing that. And so you've identified all those areas, the back and forth, so we're really hoping that we can get down to a final number as far as going forward. To be able to say how this project would go forward with the schedule. Again, the positive things are, you know, they've got some projects that are finishing up. Uh, one of the things that's taken a lot of their time is the working of the Rockwood landfill. That'll be done in October. And so there's time in their schedule to do it. They're very interested. And uh so we just have to work it, so we're not spending three million dollars more than you have. And so, but they didn't say no. They said they'll work with us and so it's back and forth right now as far as trying to get something going in the downtown. Questions on that and can you add?
Yeah. Um, yeah, so think where in terms of the funding, um, where it has come in significantly over budget, you know. The work that Brent is doing with JBI to try to reduce that cost and we're still looking at. There's going to be a deficit and how are we going to cover that deficit? So I just been, well, we have been looking at what's available for funding right now, something in the short term. There are a couple of um essentially either a no match opportunity or opportunities where we can use existing funding as match. Because I think what we're trying to avoid is us putting. You know, we we've put a lot in reserves into this project and. So we're looking at options where that's, you know, what what's out there that is not like super, super long term, far away funding. And there are a couple of options, so we'll continue to explore those and bring back um information as to what we think we should apply for. But there is, like you said, uh, we learned today of zero ma- zero match um USDA opportunity. Um, that usually takes longer. There's now a very rare, very rare uh state opportunity. Um, that is a match. There is match required, but we also have this earmark that we we got as the third phase of the project, which we haven't. Fully like allocated yet, um, or specifically allocated yet, and we haven't used that for match for anything else, so it's kind of. An option um as far as we know. So, yeah, so I, you know, I feel like we're in this very limbo phase of like, you know, we don't really know what that final number is, but we're thinking like, okay, if we're looking for another. Million to two million dollars, like where are we getting that money? Um. And I think it's like, you know, this is the reality that we're in. Um, it's not where we wanted to be, but to move forward, um, that's what it, that's what it looks like and. You know, it's, I think it's our job to find that money, so.
Is there any way to cut back without? Having a problem with existing funding?
You can't, we can't change, we can't reduce the scope. If we, if we say, oh, we'll just not do this and not do that, we get less money. So we're kind of in the same position, like if, you know. Once we change the scope. Whatever that reflects in terms of dollar amount, like the the funders of care that it came in overbid, that's sort of our problem.
Yeah.
Um, the project is the project.
It's gonna be very difficult though to get funding, especially for three million dollars a pound. We'll probably have a problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, we're we're, three million is what it came in over budget. We're trying to get that. If we can get that halved, that would be, you know. I don't know, but we're.
What happens if we can't get grants and not to match it?
I think that's a conversation that you'll have to have. Um. What happens? I mean, I don't, I can't answer that question. That's for you guys, I think.
Well, I I guess what I'm saying is we're not.
Nobody's locked in there.
That's what I mean, like it's.
No.
Yeah, that's what I mean. We're not like.
No.
I passed the point of no return here. Okay.
Right, exactly. And 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 to that point, it's like if you wait too long, the funder just says, hey. What's up? You gonna do this or not? And they can just pull the funding. They can say, sorry, apply again.
Mm hmm.
Um, and we've, you know, we've had. A couple of, well, I don't know if we've had two extensions on E D A, but at least one. So we've already, and then our, or we have a main E O T grant that we've extended a couple of times now too, so. I think we're all like a little bit, you know, like, okay. Um, what's gonna happen here? So. I mean, I think we're trying to be realistic and um we've been successful with funding, um. Whether we continue to be successful and of course funding. There's a timeline to it. I I think our best hope. Is this state grant. There's twenty five million dollars um available and a lot of people are going to be going for it, whether we're going to be competitive or not. I have no idea, um, because I just don't know what else is out there that people are applying for. We have the advantage in that we're we're ready to go um and and oftentimes funders like that, and I think the state wants to see. The money being used right away, so. I wish I was like a bearer of great news and had a crystal ball, but. I think we're just, like, we're doing the best we can. We're trying to be realistic and we're just, we'll just keep bringing you the information that we have as it, as it's current.
So can you um say or know when negotiations with Jake will start or continue or end or when?
I'd I'd hope in the next couple of weeks. I mean, he's got, we get, for instance. An example would be when he carried a paving price. He carried a paving price of about a million and a half dollars for paving. And so what 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 he told us is he got a price from the subcontractor paver. Two days before the bid, it was half of that. He didn't feel like he had enough time to evaluate that. So he carried, he carried the million and a half. You know, he was, he was, he was the only bidder, so he didn't, and he knew that. He didn't, he didn't feel compelled. To 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 do something and then find out this guy was, he missed something and he and Jake was left holding the bag. And so, so he's looking at those kind of things to say, you know, hey, let's finalize that paving number, see if that's a real number. Because that'll bring quite a bit off the project to be able to do. It's not hurting Jake because he's carrying that as a sub. Right? So it's not minimizing his work necessarily. And so those are the kind of things we're looking at. There are a couple of other things that he kind of. He threw a number at because he wasn't really sure and part of it is like electrical. We had, he didn't really have an electrical look at the job. And so he said, one of the things we need to do is you need to get a couple of electricals. I had showed, I had him look at the job to give you a price. So you know exactly what it is you can carry. And he just had not done that. It's those kind of things to say, well, so you can't, you you threw a number into it's covered. But it's a number that's way inaccessible. We think it should be. And so we need to look at those kind of things to be able to feel like we can narrow that number down.
Yeah, so I mean, we're hope, we're hoping, you know, by the end of this month, but it's probably going to be early June. And once we have that number, we'll be a little, I I'll feel a little better knowing what we're.
Exactly. Once we get the final bond quote from him.
Yeah.
Then see what happens.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know we've talked about this often on our soon meetings.
And then just an update on the phase two, which is the boat launches, the two parking lots. And then, as Brett mentioned, the the water district building relocation, which we're kind of, I mean, it's all part of that same funding pool, but it's kind of a separate. Project, the water district, because it doesn't need to be the same contractor and it's sort of, you know, independent. So today Brent, um, well, yesterday Brent shared with us the initial drafts of uh the concepts for for the parking lot designs. Um, so we were able, Marjorie, Brett, um, Millie and I were able to review that with Jim um first thing this morning. And then we we met with, I think, like fifteen people today, um, business owners, um, fishermen, um, prop- property owners. Um, and then, you know, because the citizens that have been attending the meetings, the state folder meetings regularly. Um, or the community meetings and um, you know, I think overall, I think people had good feedback on. To which Woodard and Kern can apply, you know, to revisions to this version of the design. I think the. Things that came up in terms of um concerns. Um, you know, like parking is always a concern, but like we we looked at the down, the downtown parking lot and we're not, we won't lose any parking there just based on, you know, the. How, what the configuration of parking will be. Um, you know, people are asking about where the eagle might be relocated. There is a area that's sort of, um, you know, up toward the water, but out of, out of the way on the side in a corner where the eagle could possibly go. Um, and then um trying to think of other uh things. I mean, I think the main issue that was raised um from fishermen is. Elevating the parking lot, you know, what does that do to access if you raise it eighteen inches? You know, at what tide is the um loading and unloading of traps, um, you know, going to be uh possible? And does that really limit the window of when people can um be able to do that? And that, so that's a concern with some people. Um, so you know, there there was a conversation about that. Um, in terms of the data, the commercial fish plant parking lot, we talked about. Um, again, like, you know, is that going to get paved? Or is it not going to get paved? How do you manage the parking in there? Like, who parks in there? Um, you know, do do you want to have designated parking for, you know, larger vehicles and tractor trailers? Like, where do the boat trailers park? And then I think the idea of like access and accessing the waterfront really came up. When we were talking in about the elevation of the downtown parking lot, but also the fish plant parking lot, just in terms of like. The fact that it's always congested with traps and so can people actually be accessing there, you know, even if they wanted to? Because we're we're talking about adding another hoist, but if, you know, there's. If it's congested in there, at the fish plant parking lot, if it's congested in there, you know, it's still, is still a challenge for access. So there's, there was the issue of like, you know, is it management? Is it the physical, like, you know, enhancing the physical space? But I think at the end of the conversation, you know, people still agreed like. Improvements, improvements there are better than no improvements there and the management side of things is almost like a separate question. Um, so we can do all the improvements we want, but you know, if there isn't the ability to kind of. Manage what's already on the books for ordinances or whatever they are, the harbor harbor ordinance, I think is that. There's only so much that adding a hoist is going to do to improve access or adding ladders is going to do to improve access, so. Um, anyway. We are, yeah, I feel like, and we were able to meet with Greta, which was good. She came down there. Um, so, yeah, just kind of. The conversation, I think, in both parking lots is always like. You know, these are public parking lots. Who who uses them and does someone have more of a right to use it than someone else? And like, if everyone is a business essentially, like victim and our business, bunkers is a business, you know, greets is a business, parking lot vendors, you know, they're running a small business. So like, how do you balance all of that is really, I think, what it comes down to and. You know, you're you're trying to do something to mitigate flooding, but that's going to impact fishermen's access. So there's just a lot of questions that come up when we're talking about these details and I think. I mean, I think the designs have done a good job so far of putting together everything that's been said up until today, which was a lot of. Different things, I think, that you guys collected over the last year for information and. Yeah, so anyway, um, our next step would be to take everything that we learned today and then we also have um some conversations tomorrow with folks. And then that information will get, you know, put into the next version of the design. And as you know, from. The first phase of the project, we're hoping, well, I don't think we have it in the plan to have that many iterations because we had so many different versions of the last. Set of designs. Now granted, that was all of Main Street, so. Uh, I guess we can have a little more leeway there, but this one will be hopefully not like. However, many different versions we had of the first one. So, yeah, anyway, I would just say, because I know folks listen to this on Facebook or watch, like, we have designs here. You can talk to Marjorie. You can look at the designs that were presented today. We want feedback from anybody and this is our town, so all of us have a stake in this and all of us can weigh in. But now is the time to weigh in. Um, and I just think it's really important, like, this isn't being done to us. This is something we have the opportunity to have. You know, to create for ourselves and we get to decide as a community, like, what's, you know, what do we, what do we want to see there? And I think it's up to us too to work with you guys, the select board, to come up with a solution that balances as much as we can all of these different. Priorities that people have from from different business perspectives and from like the celebration committee. I mean, we're able to get good feedback today from you and Tori and I mean, that's a another huge part of the downtown parking lot is how we use that in community celebrations. So I I it's all really important and. We just want to get as much input as we can now uh while we're designing.
So do you, what, how much of an impact is raising the parking lot eighteen inches going to make? Because I've had several people ask me about it.
Impact in terms of impact, like.
Fishermen.
Yeah, well, I mean, we heard different things, like Eric, we spoke with Eric today in the parking lot and he felt like it was a significant impact. Um, Reagan, Warren met with us here today and he he did say, yeah, I think it's going to impact, but it's not like. Not going to make it so you can't do it. Not gonna make it so you can't do it. So it, I think it really just depends on, you know, it is an issue, it's not a non-issue for sure. But it might just depend on who you talk to in terms of can someone do it or not or.
Yeah, I thought Reagan was apprehensive at first, but by the time we got done talking about it, he seemed to. Think, well, gee, really, it's not as much as what you think it is.
I've just had several people ask me, so I just wanted clarification.
You should ask them to come in and look at the design.
I did, yeah.
Well, I came in this morning and met with. Um, that first school Tory and and it was a good conversation. It was important, I think, it made me. Uh, feel better about the design, the parking lot, the configuration of the parking spaces and. Handicap spaces, if you could find them.
Are they there? Are they um? Are you raising the entire parking lot up? You know, like as it is now, they raised it up once before, that's why it all slopes up. Is the whole thing getting raised up so it's all gonna be flat or is it gonna continue to have a sloping?
A little bit of a slope, so when both of them, we're gonna do like, we're on the, on the. The commercial parking lot, like, the edge is gonna go up six inches, so not a lot, but about six inches. The other one, we proposed to come up eighteen inches. And what that means is, when we go through it, it'll kind of slope down. And then in the middle, they have a couple of catch bases and drains, then it'll slope back up again to the edge. So we don't have as much fill, so it'll kind of all drain to the middle. So the stormwater will all drain to the middle and and ship out. And so it'll kind of come down a little bit, then back up a little bit to the edge. So they both roll a little bit, because we've got some catch bases and structure in the middle of that. As opposed to just sheet floor everywhere. We we just try to get water from having to run across the whole park and we're trying to direct it to low spots and then get it out.
The dips will not be as aggressive as they are now.
No, not not.
Much more.
We want catch bases in most of them, yeah, we just don't want to be quite as sloped.
The catch basin will be your a point of ex- access for incoming waters too, wells outgoing, right?
No, we'll, we'll, we're hoping that with our, on all the outlets, we've got uh duck bills, we've got.
Okay.
We've got those things, so like, what happens is, when it rains and it goes out and it can go out, that's great. When tide comes up and covers it, it's closed and you can't back up into it. And so we've got kind of outlet protection on all of our outlets.
And the same thing at the um, I call the fish plant parking lot as well, the outflow has a duck bill on.
And that's only getting those six inches.
The edge of that just.
But we're adding another hoist in, correct?
Yes. Though, so down there, so o- overall, down there, we've got, you know, all the piles got to be replaced with the caps, a lot of work down there. Uh, a a lot, a few more ladders, because we don't have no ladders down there to get access to it. We've got another hoist to go in, so we'll have three total hoists. We're doing from the edge, you know, depending on one inch, twenty-nine feet, the other forty-two feet, just concrete. Because we thought, you know, that's good surface for working and stuff like that, storing things and driving on it. We'll still have the kind of the wooden rail across the whole thing, because that's a little more forgiving when you got something on it. And so, but if you raise that up six inches, wooden rail's still there, all that's concrete. And then it kind of the edge of where that concrete is to where the pavement would be, would be, we would have some of the catch bases and stuff like that. If, for instance, we end up not being able to do paving and just gravel, we'd still put. Something around those catch bases so they're not sitting in the gravel, so they're just protected a little bit. As far as drains, if if for some reason we can't get paving all the way. But um, so that's a, so a little bit more work down there on the, on the. Down parking lot, there's only a couple of, there's only a couple that need to be replaced. We swing caps on all of them. We've got, I think, three ladders going in there, because again, we're trying to get adequate ladders all the way around there. And so not quite as much work, but we're raising it eighteen inches at this point in time, proposing raising eighteen inches. I mean, magic, getting to nine and a half feet, ten feet gets to be the magic point of like, not having a high tide splash in the parking lot. And so we're trying to kind of balance where that number is. I mean, we don't need to go three feet, eighteen inches feels like we could do it so that that kind of nuisance flooding wouldn't happen. But again, we want to be cognizant of the fact of what does that do for fishermen as far as how they get access and and what does that do? And so we've still got some balance to do there.
And understanding too, that if we have a storm surge like we've had in January, was it, um, you know, that, there's not much you can do to protect. The storm surge from going over, but a regular high tide or a high force tide, this would certainly help, yeah.
Um, you know, and the acknowledgement too, like, this is one area, right? Everything around it is not getting elevated, we're not, you know.
Yeah, they're stopped it there, yeah.
You know, those are considerations.
Eric's got some.
So if you raise it eighteen inches, are you gonna have to raise the capson, put a new capson in? In the parking lot?
A new um.
If you're gonna raise the parking lot eighteen inches above what it is now, are you then gonna be putting a new capson around?
Yeah, the, yes.
No, no, oh, you can, you mean the poles?
No, the, the caps and that they're attached to.
Oh, yes, yes.
So it's eight, it's eighteen inches, then plus the capson on top of that?
Yeah.
I just think that, I just think that people need to think that, stop and think that. This project, when it's done, is gonna be there for a while. If you don't make the necessary adjustment now. Two or three years from now, like that's, as I said this morning, we thought that raising the uh carrying place bridge. People that don't, no, we don't need to do that and said, yeah, we think we do. Everybody said, well, it's gonna be twenty, thirty years before anything happens. Well, guess what? It wasn't, it was a year.
Yeah, that's a lot of storm and the bottom washed out.
But I'm just saying, the point is, the bad storms. That, and the high tides, that everybody's saying, oh, it's gonna be twenty, thirty years before we have to worry about that. It's happened already.
Raise that eighteen inches. That made a lot of difference as far as over top of the road.
Yeah, I think, I think if that hadn't been raised and with the same storm, it could have, it probably would have taken the bridge out. Quite frankly, it's very possible.
Yeah. But my point is, it's happening quicker than what we think. And we can't afford to rebuild every time, you know, beginning to think.
It's not, it's not, yeah, I mean, this is a very imperfect product, we know, like, that was, there wasn't anything there, right? The harbor, that's where the harbor was. And we have this low line area that we have all this infrastructure that we value that's sitting in there. And and we can't, you know, we're not gonna go in and elevate the entire thing. You'd have to get every single property owner to, you know, raise buildings and put more bill. I mean, think of what a huge project that would be and. This is, this was always meant to be like, we have this aging infrastructure. Okay, if we're gonna do this, well, shouldn't we do that too, instead of digging up the road, you know, two years later? I know here we are, like, many years later, we haven't even broken ground yet. So that's one of the, you know, challenges with a larger project. But this is supposed to be like the twenty, thirty-year infrastructure project, not like, okay, we're solving some problem. That is gonna, you know, make us not have to deal with water in that area ever again. We're just trying to mitigate where we can and.
And we're lucky that the water main didn't get washed away. So it is important, Eric.
Um, back to the eighteen inches too, um, kind of perspective is usually an eight-foot tide. It's like the, you know, the lowest high tide we get. So now, within the eighteen inches, it's gonna be almost a ten-foot tide before it equals an eight-foot. So, you know, there'll be a lot of tides that it really won't be that handy. Um, especially from the smaller boats, having one person, whatever, so.
I think it's like some of the things we talked about today, like, are there ways to like have certain areas that are lower or sink down? Or like, you know, what other kind of solutions could there be to help with that and still accomplish elevation? And and, you know, I, I mean, I'm not, obviously, I'm not the engineer, but I think the thing is like. This is why we talk about these things now, so we can try to figure out, are there possible solutions to try to accomplish multiple goals? And sometimes there are and sometimes they're not. I would say, like, if there's any fishermen who use that pa- use that parking lot regularly to load and unload, like, talk to us now. Because we need to know, is this a problem? I mean, if if it's a problem for three people, I don't know if that outweighs, you know, the value that we gain by elevation. But if it's a problem for a significant number of people, that's, I think that's a different consideration. But we don't know that unless we, you know, we talk to people. So please, yeah, even even if you don't want to come in and talk to select board members or Marjorie, like, talk to people you know and get the message to us.
I also, I mean, not as road commissioner, but as a citizen, you know, the fish plant parking lot. If that were cleaned up and in better shape, I feel like more fishermen would be able to use that space. And with the hoist, especially for people that are alone, you know, the hoist, I would think would come in much handier. So I think that's something that needs to be addressed going down.
And there is that forty-eight hour.
There is, it's, yeah, it's, yeah.
Leaving traps after forty-eight hours, so it is the ordinance.
I mean, we talked with Jim about that too. I mean, I think there's like, you know, there's a point, like, like, to have everything, like, you can't, like, you can't count on the weather. So what if you bring out your traps and then you realize like, well, I can't go out the next day or, you know, whatever it is, like. There could be things that are outside of that forty-eight hours that are gonna impact whether you could do something. I think it's just sort of that general premise of like, there's so many people that need to use that area. And how can everyone cooperate to make sure that it's, it is accessible to to people who want to use it? Um, and of course, I mean, I, you know, I'm not the manager.
Eric, you want us, um, then we'll move on if Eric has.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I mean, Greta did note the other day when she was getting things ready, that because of the condition of it being full. Two fishermen came down with their traps and then they went to Plan B and went to the parking lot. So my concern is, you know, I don't use either, didn't pass the parking lot. But we have to be careful that we don't make the parking lot downtown so unhandy. That then you're having a multitude of people trying to overuse that town or that's just one of the flip sides, so.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, Public Works.
Hi.
Hi, Nelson.
Um, I don't, I see the weekly report on here, but I didn't need to discuss that at all or everybody. I missed the week my dad passed away, sorry about that, but um. Right back on schedule now as far as getting that together. Um, so the next thing on there is the excavator proposal. Um, I sent more information to all of you, I believe, starting with a proposed five-year plan. Um, which uh shows. The amount of money in our funds and um my proposed purchase plan to going forward uh as far as keeping equipment up to date. And so I wanted to just start there with any questions you have or any thoughts. And what it does show in here is the purchase of an excavator. Again, this number is is in here, whether it's, I would expect or hope that I can get that down a little bit more. Um, if we do decide to go this way. Um, but it shows that it does work. Um, and we are able to save money to um.
Yeah, I was looking for.
To go forward with purchasing of equipment. Um, I think a plan is very important so that we know exactly where my thought process is. Um, and so this, I hope, helps clarify that thought process. Are there any questions on that page? That's. Anything? No, right?
Well, I guess I don't.
Um, the next thing that I um put together was um a. Cost analysis of what we spend out on private um. Private contractors from twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, so the past three years. And I'm not gonna stop at each month or each year rather. But just to say that um in three years, we've spent ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars on private. Contractors to do stuff that we could be doing already ourselves. That's one, anybody have any questions on that page?
Nope, but that was the question I asked you last time you were here, and that's the answer, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
Eric.
With those private contractors, was there any like specialized equipment, like with Luke who had that?
He had, yeah, he he had a um, he he spent, I think it was four, we did fourteen thousand dollars. Um, on in twenty-twenty-three for him to do roadside, which is another thing that I bring up with an excavator. Was to say that if we didn't want to rent one for a month, that we couldn't do the same thing if we have the excavator to put it on.
Okay, I just wanted that to equal that ninety, if there would be any of a specialized equipment you'd have to buy, that's the only question.
No. Um, then we look at uh the page with the rented excavator. Um, I know that it was brought up. Actually, I'll skip, I'll skip the hours yet, because it's on the other page. Um, but in the rented excavator, the first year was eight thousand, sixty dollars for twenty-two, twenty-three. It was twenty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-four. And then the twenty-three, twenty-four, we spent eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars on that. Um, the monthly average payment, because it fluctuated a little bit due to uh they. They take, they add on the delivery fee and ferry services and such. So that was. Um, average about three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one, twenty-nine a month.
Where's that, Nelson? You can do that.
One of these, yeah.
Oh, um, Magic, help.
Um, I, can I use the question back on this five-year plan?
Yep.
So it shows the expenditure each year for um. The lease, twenty-nine thousand. But if you're gonna buy a dump truck in twenty-five, twenty-six, where is that expense gonna come out of?
So what happened there is, I didn't put it in red, but um if you look at the total capital project equipment. You'll see, you'll see a hundred plus the seventy-one.
Right.
That spends down the two thousand, thirty-four dollars, because we spent, we did the um payment for the excavator. And then the hundred and forty thousand for the truck.
Okay.
I should have made that a little clearer, but.
A little thick.
Yeah, so everything is in there and it just shows at the, on the total remaining for carryover. That line item, that that section shows what's left after the excavator and. The piece of equipment or truck or whatever that we need to purchase, shows where that is, right? Well, let's see. I don't need to go over this, because I think I already did in the, but this one is just more of the same sequence as well, absolutely go. Um, so then some other things that people ask for is what are some of the things that we did? With the excavator over the past two years? And these are the things that my memory remembers. I know there was more here and there, but um I have a page and a half of of things that we have taken care of um ourselves. Um. You know, there's been a quite a bit of work that we've done so far and obviously still a lot more to do. But um, last year, we had a unusually wet summer, so. Uh, that didn't go as well as planned, but I think that would happen whether we owned our own excavator. Or we leased one, or we didn't have one at all. We have weather, that's a reality. And if we have it for more than six months, maybe we could make up some of that time lost. Don't list every single thing um on that. Um, then I did a. Here, I did a section on the positives and the negatives of these to own, to hire outside contractors or to. Here I did a section on the positives and the negatives of these to own, to hire outside contractors, or to continue to rent an machine. Um, I'm not gonna read through all of those. Um, some places that I hit, that I would hit on is. Um, one of the things that has definitely. Um, made a difference for me is the fact that we have to have a CDL driver to take the rented one anywhere. I did look into getting a smaller one, and if you can believe it, like a John Deere sixty was almost twice as much money to run. The smaller the excavator, the more they add to rent, unless you get into the yak side sectors. So, you know, that that was a problem there. Um, with the one that we're proposing to buy or the size of proposing to buy. You don't need a CDL license and any of our trucks will haul it. Um, which also means that when the Western Star. Has its final breath, which could be tomorrow or two years from now, I don't know, but we we can replace that truck with. A smaller truck that fits our needs on the island. There was, I did on the last page where I just kinda did a little, a little writing there. Um, I made an error that I picked up today when I was going over this, um, with the hours that we put in. Um, the rented excavator, the first year, we put on three hundred and seventeen hours. The next year dropped significantly due to the rain, a hundred and forty-six hours. But I pulled back and I looked at the uh, what we run the um. Backhoe at on a year-round basis, and we run that four hundred and twenty-one. The excavator, we ran three hundred and seventeen the first year, a hundred and forty-six the second year, and that was in six months or less. Which also means that um, the. Backhoe right now runs eight hours a week, whereas the excavator was running around twelve a week. Um, our pickup truck, which is the most widely used piece of equipment we have, um, is just above that at four hundred and twenty-six hours a year. So I, I think it's more about what you can do in the time versus. Um, you know, how many hours each piece of equipment is spent. Um, the other day, for instance, I will say that we worked on the Lanes Island Bridge. We had to take riprap over there and fix that. Um. We took five loads of riprap and a load of gravel. I was in the excavator doing the work over there and Nick stayed up and loaded the trucks. Now, if we were doing that with the backhoe. We would have had to load two trucks, come down, take it out because you can't just leave it in the road, so, you know, it has to be. Pushed off very quickly. You can't get the dump trucks turned to dump it off over there. So we probably would have been three days or better doing that with with the backhoe. Not to mention, we couldn't keep the lane open because it's not wide enough. The backhoe has to move every two minutes to get relocated and stuff, so um, you know, there is. There, I think there are a lot of possibilities in having that. Um, and then just for the end. In case you guys didn't know, we do do, I do annual work. Like the things that we need to do, and I try to, I. Every year I do a whole list through the winter of things that we need to do, and then I try to prioritize. At what needs to happen first, when and where. So that's what this list is, and then I, I kinda do this out just so that I can. For a quick visual, it's more for me than anybody, that I can see where we should be doing and what at what.
Who runs the excavator?
Um, I do, Nick does, mostly me right now.
This is. Got a topic for another day, but I just wanted to touch on it because we talked about it here. The thing about the CDL. And the small trucks and like when the Western Star does need to be replaced. I totally get the mayor in the smaller trucks not needing a CDL. I think something we need to focus on, like say this for another day, is getting some of the public's work departments to get their CDL. Because we, we need, we need to maintain having at least one or two bigger trucks. If we do get a real winter again. Those those trucks that we have are not gonna cut it, and that's, I've talked to basically all the island contractors, they all say the same thing.
If you're out there from the beginning filing and keeping up with it like we do, I don't see.
If we get a real, real bad storm, that might not be possible, that.
I disagree there, but that's just, that's my opinion.
I must say I have the same concern as well, talking to people. In in drifting snow, I mean, we haven't had a. Bad storm for a few years, but what was it, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, we had, I think there were eight feet of snow in front of my old house. I tend to agree with Millie. That I think it's, you know, I think you can get by. Um, there's, if you have a big storm, you've got Jake's big front end loader. Backhoes available that to spend the amount of money, I was horrified. With what that truck was the Western Star got, because I started looking into getting a four-wheel drive. Big truck and it happened after I was there and I never envisioned that bigger truck. I mean, yes, in theory we could, but if you just look how the winters are going and with climate change. If I was in Millie's position, I'd be promoting the same thing.
Okay, well, I think our discussion right now, excuse me, I think our discussion right now is about the excavator proposal, not about. CDLs and four-wheel drive trucks. I think our focus right now should be on seven-two excavator proposal. So, do you wanna vote on that?
Yeah, motion to take a vote.
Okay. Second, second.
This is the lease to own, correct?
Lease to own or rent?
And this just takes it to the town meeting.
So.
So it's a motion to put it on the warrant for the annual meeting.
The motion is what? Can we get the?
The excavator proposal, do we want to accept the proposal? I mean, what, what is that?
Somebody needs to just make a motion, like motion to accept, motion to deny the proposal. And then there was a second on the motion, then you vote.
Okay, so.
If we, pardon me, but if we, this would go before the town, before the town meeting, not, we're not saying yea or nay to the.
So the point is that um, within the public works budget. We have an equipment line in the operating budget, and we have in that line money to rent. An excavator, and we've put money in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So that's how it is right now. So if you're going to lease to own a piece of equipment, it's like borrowing money. So it's a different and separate article, so it would come out of the operating budget. And there would be a separate article about borrowing money to uh, lease, purchase an excavator.
At town meeting.
Yes.
We're not approving, we're not saying yea or nay to buying or leasing the excavator, we're saying yea or nay to putting it on the town meeting warrant.
Right, but I need to know, um, well, I really need to know tonight because. Uh, I also am proposing that we meet next week to sign the final warrant for town meeting, because we need to get that book. You know, the town meeting book printed, and I need to get the warrant signed, and we need to sign it at a. Um, duly noticed meeting, and I, you know, I need to get three of the selectmen here. We're, well, Elizabeth and I are proposing that we meet next Tuesday, but just to, just to get the warrant signed. But I need to know what kind of article that we're gonna be putting in the town meeting uh, for people to vote on.
If we want to accept the proposal. If we vote to not.
If you don't accept this proposal, then. There will be money in the operating budget. The operating budget has already been approved by the budget committee and the selectmen. And that does include rent money for renting an excavator.
But if we vote no to the excavator proposal to lease to um, buy, then that goes away. That's what it's, that's what this is about now. So, do you want to, um. Should I make a motion to accept the excavator proposal? Is that how it should read?
You could make a motion to either accept it or deny it.
So if I say, do you make a motion to accept the excavator proposal? If you want to accept that proposal, you would vote yes. If you don't, then you would vote no. Is that, okay. Correct? All right.
Do you need a second for that? Okay, second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, so. We, okay, hold on, no, wait a minute. I'm confused, so did that mean we?
Three to accept the proposal.
All right, so I want to rescind, I wanna, can I rescind that? Because I think. Yeah. Can I rescind that vote?
Revote.
Revote? Can I revote?
The motion is to accept the proposal and create a warrant article to lease to own an excavator.
That would go before the.
I would like to revote.
Go ahead.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the motion to accept the proposal? Is in favor. Who's in favor? So I'm confused. All in favor, that will revote it. All in favor.
Yes, and it's to put it on the warrant for the town meeting.
All opposed.
So the town can vote.
Okay. Okay, so that's three nays and two yeses. Okay. All right. I'm sorry, that, I'm sorry to have been so confusing on that. It was um. A little confused. All right, uh, go on to the paving estimate.
So we received um, an estimate from Northeast Paving, used to be Lane Construction. And they were bidding five hundred and thirty-two dollars a ton and one point. One million five hundred and ninety-six thousand just to do the round the island road and. Five hundred and thirty-two dollars a ton. That includes all of the mobilization, but still, it seems outrageously high to me.
Three-quarter inch.
It's not even reclaiming anything, right?
A three-quarter inch overlay and then a three-quarter inch, this is gonna look like it does down in the fountain after a year.
That's crazy.
That's what that round the island road is, two-point-eight-nine miles. That does the whole entire. Road.
It does, but it doesn't fix it. It just.
I know that, I'm just.
Yeah.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that was.
That's right, isn't it? Two-point-eight-nine, yeah. So I could say three miles.
Reclaim any part of it, it's gonna be a billion dollars.
Yeah, I mean, if you were actually gonna fix that and get it raised up all correctly, I don't know what you'd have in that, but a lot.
So it's a three-quarter inch shim and a three-quarter inch surface.
It's not even gonna cover the existing potholes along the rocks.
We had a long discussion about this years ago, that what needed to be reclaimed. Uh, what parts really needed the work.
Well, I guess as a courtesy, I just need to get back to them with, you know, it's just the price is too high, isn't that the consensus?
To be polite, yes.
To be polite, yes.
Keeping our options open.
Yeah, I mean.
I would never.
Can pair to some other, if other pavers.
Well, for instance, Allesboro just went out to bid for a paving project and it was. Northeast was the high bidder at three eighty-nine a ton. And um, I can't remember who the other two bidders were, but the high bid for that project was three eighty-nine.
So why is ours so ridiculously higher?
Because we're, is it because we're not doing enough?
Are they doing all?
Yeah, I mean, they have to still go on a ferry to get out there mining.
Yeah, correct, but I'm just saying if you're not doing a lot, some, you know, if you're doing a bigger project.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Economy of scale makes it a little less expensive. Uh, Allesboro is just so different. When they get doing a project, they just have the trucks come directly and they just. For those few days, just saw the trucks, so the logistics is so much less. Um, they can get so many trucks out there compared to what we can, so, so. It's like apples and oranges, the two islands when it comes to their favorite projects.
Yeah. I would say the biggest thing, to go ahead and do it, is make sure we do not do it in October again like Dogtown. That all just peeled up instantly, it needs to be done. Early as possible.
If you don't put enough down, it's gonna peel up too, and they didn't put, they didn't put any tack down or anything, they just went over it. That's, that's the failure.
This was with a tack coat too, wasn't it? Yeah, yeah, includes tack coat.
Eric?
Besides the lateness, there was actually something wrong with the mix.
Right.
And lane should have been required to rip it off, so what Millie's doing was spreading it out. Those holes aren't really deep enough, so you're really doing the only thing you can do.
Thing I can do.
You know, so. Gonna do to straighten that road out.
Moving on to eight. Full business, streetlight project update.
I just wanted to keep you informed about this project. If you remember, uh, we got some uh. Community Resilience Partnership Community Action Grant, is that what it's called? Yeah, it was North Haven and Vinyl Haven to re- to um, replace our streetlights with LED lights. So um, Affinity, the company that we're working with, is currently doing inventories of the streetlights on North Haven and Vinyl Haven. I guess they really didn't have much information at all on North Haven. We have some information here. Uh, so once we get the inventories. Uh, we'll schedule a time and a process to work with Affinity on light locations and wattages. Any removal of current lights, any new lights, so people will have an opportunity to weigh in. Um, this will include a public discussion. FIEC is working on their new tariff, which will include uh, the um, new LED lighting for streetlights. And we're hopeful that the streetlight replacement will be in September or October. And again, this is kind of a rough ti- timeline. I'm just trying to give you an idea of where the project stands and what we're doing. I just wanted to give you an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business. Local license renewal application for Dot and Millie's install. Just need a motion to sign.
Need a motion?
Yes, please. Motion to sign. The uh, local license renewal applications for Dot and Millie's install.
So moved.
On favor? I'm gonna move along for all you guys' signings, is that okay? Uh, the Amber Stil survey.
So we have a, recently had a survey done um, of the park area, Amber's Hill. And there were some. Areas. That the surveyor couldn't really determine through the deeds. I tried to circle the three areas that are in question. So my question to you, the board, is if you want me to pursue. Um, confirming the boundaries of the park. Uh, would mean, of course, money and, uh, attorneys to. Either draw up boundary agreements or new deeds and more research as to the ownership. So.
Second of the parks.
It would.
How much do you know what's left in that?
Oh, the Parks Reserve?
Yeah.
I think it was about forty thousand.
Even after State Beach?
I think so, I can go get my book if you want, so I know for certain.
Do you think we should? Check to make sure?
I don't know, I, I'm wondering if Lenell's on her phone on the, on Zoom, I wonder this, she wanted to weigh in. She spent going to, uh, she worked very closely with the surveying company.
Right.
And, um. I mean, I don't know. How important, how important is it that we shore up these boundaries in our park?
What are we looking at for additional cost on? Any idea, ballpark?
It's always expensive when you deal with attorneys, you know, I'm sure it's in the thousands.
Lenell, do you have any comment? There, listening?
Oh, gosh, um. So the areas that are. Of concern are not. They're, they're relatively small, um. I think it might be worth having a discussion with the landowners. To say, you know, we've discovered this problem, what do you think? And then, um, proceed from there, I don't. I don't think there's anything that would be truly controversial. This is my take on it, but, um, you know that people. Land is really close to people's hearts and they can get worked up very quickly.
What's the cost of the survey? I don't remember.
Uh, it ended up being about seven thousand.
That's cheap. I mean, I think. My two cents worth, it probably would be, wouldn't be a bad idea to have a conversation with the landowners. Yeah, I think that'd be good stuff. Um, and if there's, if there's issues, then it, then it makes, might make sense to continue on and get things formed up.
So we're doing this for the newly formed committee, right, correct? To redo the playground and the.
Well, that's how it all came about.
Okay, that's what I figured.
Um, uh, yeah, one. Yeah, I think the landowners chat with the landowners.
Yeah, chat, and how, and how, cause how much of that? Project will, will then replace, you know, if it's not gonna. Effect that boundary line, it.
I think it's a different issue to me anyway.
Right.
You know, I think the project will still proceed to make some, uh. What improvements to the playground area, but I don't think that the boundaries are gonna affect the project.
It would be good to have a clean survey and a clean understanding of the boundaries are. If they blend on the.
Will the mapping help on that or?
Will the what?
Will the mapping we're doing, will that help define the source?
Oh, uh, no, I think that they would have the same. They'd be looking at the same deeds, doing the same research.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll do some more, um, talking with the competitors and see how that goes.
Um, C Airport Survey.
So there, we had a few discussions, we put money in the budget to do a new airport. And I kept hearing that there was already a survey of the airport, we didn't need a new survey. And I've gone through just about everything and other, other, um, people, Margaret Quilly was helping me search upstairs and all the. You know. There's, um, you know, about three hundred surveys up there of different properties, but anyway. I was only able to find something really old from the nineteen nineties. And this company that did it is no longer in business, this was done in nineteen ninety. Um, so. I guess I just, I think we should just proceed and have a new survey done, but I wanted to make sure that, cause it was a while ago that we had this discussion. Do you still want me to move ahead with having another, a new survey done of our airport property?
Is that one accurate?
Well, what this was is a study, um. It was. We were looking at, the town was looking at nineteen ninety, uh, re, kind of relocating the airstrip. So it's really confusing to look at, it does have property lines on here. But to me, it's very confusing because you have to look kind of underneath the proposed. New, um, runway, and this runway is not our current runway. So. And the owners are all different, so. I mean, like, if this is, if you're happy with this, you know. Doesn't have any measurements. Yeah.
As I remember when we're having that discussion, Dan Cross said he has to ready the airport.
Well, I think what he was talking about, what I have is when it was a, just a drawing that Dell did.
Yeah.
To, uh, section off the property that we sold. And it wasn't an official survey, it wasn't a stamped engineer survey. What was it called? It was just called a drawing.
Yeah, I don't even think it was called a plan, I don't think it was.
Yeah.
Have you had any quote ship, what it would be? To do this?
I mean, I'm sure it would be between five and ten. You know, that's what seems to be coming out to.
Yeah, it'd be. It'd be at least, let's say, six, seven, eight thousand.
I mean, I usually get a quote before I.
Start, maybe start with a quote, then, then we can decide.
Okay, why didn't I do that?
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing.
Makes sense.
B, um. Comane contract review.
The only thing I wanted you, I wanted to give you a copy, this is our Ecomane contract, it's gonna be up later in the year. I wanted to give you an opportunity to look at this proposed contract that they've sent. And then we'll put it on a, a future agenda to approve. But I just, I wanted to give you some opportunity to look at it and really review it before, you know, I, I don't like put, you know, putting things. In front of you and saying, sign this, um. So we have a few months to look at it and, um. Review it, so that, my intent is just to give you a copy of it so you can review it.
E, island emergency vessel.
So this has been a conversation, there's been some meetings of all of the island communities. Um, and, um. Ryan wrote up this, um, review or summary, I guess you would call it for me. Um, the Maine State Ferry Service has been involved and Shirley Pinger's office has been involved and. Um. Maine State Ferry Service, of course, would love to get out of the business of doing emergency runs. And they're willing, they say that they're willing to put some money into the purchase of this, uh, boat, but. I guess my, um, thoughts about it are, you know, where are you gonna put it? The thought is to put it in somewhere in Vinyl Haven. We don't really have a space for it, it's a seventy-five foot, uh, boat. The other piece of it is that it's staffed with paramedics. And those, so those paramedics would live here and operate the boat, so there you go with the housing again.
Most things live on the boat.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I don't know the answers, there's, there's so many questions that I have. Um, Ryan is suggesting that we should just continue with the conversations and certainly not give up on it. His last paragraph is, while this project is on initial, is on initial viewing, a very expensive and very difficult to visualize operation. I recommend the board of select and support continued exploratory work on the project. I would also like to, uh, also recommend that we invite Rick Petrie, Rob McGraw and Martin Grimes to speak with the board directly. And discuss the project further, I think that's a good idea because if they're looking at Vinyl Haven to house the boat. And to, you know. Have the staff live here that is operating the boat, then I, I think, you know, they need to come and talk to us. Uh, or talk to the board, rather.
They may have a little clearer vision that they could express in person.
Mm-hmm.
That's ambitious. Uh, yeah, that's a lot, I mean.
It's a lot.
And at some, at some point in time. I mean, I, I don't, I'm not knocking emergency services, you do take an inherent amount of risk for living out here and coming out here. Not a resort. You're saying a resort that we're coming to that needs to provide all these. Services, that's, that's a huge undertaking.
Huge.
To have a.
I mean, it's a multi-million dollar, um.
At least.
Project, uh, just the, the operating. Us, I think there was a stretch, yeah, two million, five hundred thousand.
To be honest.
A year?
That's just the.
Would it make more sense? To, just allow them to acquire a plane and. Do this kind of thing?
It's the same problem. If the weather is crappy, the plane isn't gonna fly, the boat isn't gonna go, it's the same thing, only.
Ferry service has got ten million, that's why they get some of that old stuff fixed up.
Exactly, that was my thought too, oh wait, we're gonna come up with these millions of dollars.
My purpose in letting you know about it is that there have been, I think, four meetings now. About this project, I didn't want it to go any further without notifying you about these meetings. Uh, of, you know, all of the island's emergency services, so. I'm just trying to keep you informed about it, and, uh, I think Ryan's idea of having. The drivers of the project maybe come out.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep, I was listening.
Yeah, that's a question.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, cause we're just talking about this, like, full disclosure. Um, so I, I, we talked about this planning grant that we got invited to apply for. That's around the replacing or, or fixing the crib work, that's at the very terminal. And one of the components of that was, um, you know, how we accommodate more tie-up space down there. But this conversation around the emergency vessel came up. And so one of the components in our initial. Um, letter of intent to apply was to have, uh, one or more conversations with Ryan. And the folks behind the emergency vessel project. To understand if there's like a way in that reconstruction of the crib work that, that will be an area next to. The ferry that could accommodate that vessel, so it is not this sense of like. Um, we're planning to accommodate the vessel, but if we're going to explore. What that means to like rework that area and create, you know, rebuild the wave break or the crib work. Like to just have those conversations, um. With, you know, around this emergency vessel, um, in that. In that conversation, it seemed like it would make sense rather than, um, not considering that at all, um. So I just wanted to put that out there because we, we were planning to just add that as a tiny piece of the scope of work. To have a couple of conversations and understand, um, you know, if. If a project like this were to move forward, is that even a viable area to accommodate that vessel? What would it mean? Could we still accomplish our goals? Um, and so we just felt like that would, like, they, they would be, those would be important questions to answer at this time. As opposed to not putting those questions into the proposal, so. I, you know, I just wanted to say that in case people had like huge objections because that was like a tiny component of the scope of work.
Okay.
Thank you. So we're gonna. Get together with these people and listen to what they have to say then. Good.
Okay, um, F Dangerous Building, sixty-one East Boston Road.
Um, so, uh, I'm starting to get complaints about the building, it's been abandoned, it's full of trash in and out. And there's two abandoned vehicles. Um, Fay and I went over to the, uh, house. It's just in terrible shape, so what, what I would like, um, is just to get permission. I, I think we're gonna have to pay to just have, uh, the trash removed. Uh, because of a health and safety issue, um. Talked, uh, about just taking it out of the transfer station budget. Uh, and getting, you know, hiring somebody to just get rid of the trash. In terms of. Going forward with a so-called dangerous building procedure, the problem is that. The owner is still listed as Catherine Wentworth, she is deceased. There are two sons, um. So, I guess I'm, I'm unsure of how to proceed with a dangerous building. Because what you do is you send notice to the owner and you ask them to clean it up. And then if they don't, then you take care of it and you can, um. Either put a lien on the property or add this to their taxes, the problem is that it, the USDA has a mortgage on it. They've been paying the taxes, so the taxes are all paid up, it's just, I don't have an owner. To send any notice to, so there, I guess my questions are twofold for the board. Can I just hire somebody and get it cleaned out? Because as the health and safety issue. And number two, would it be all right if I contacted our attorney if I have questions? About how to proceed with this?
Yes and yes.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the attorney first and with his guidance, hire someone to clean it out.
Because it is private property, we don't really have.
We don't have the authority to go in and do anything.
But under, well, under this, that statute, we, we can, in a, in a situation like this, just. Take care of it as a health and safety issue.
Right.
But you're right, it is private property. And, and we're be. Yeah, so I'd just like to ask.
Right.
If, if, if that says you can go in. And clean it out because it is a safety issue, health issue, because it is. And you don't, I mean, do it either way you want, do. The second one first or the first one, however you wanna do it, I would say yes to both.
Mutual.
Things.
Yep.
So, okay, why, why aren't we billing the USDA since they have the mortgage on the house?
Find who to talk to.
Well, I've talked with a couple of different people. Um, one person said it's probably in foreclosure, but the foreclosure backlog is so huge. That they don't have enough staff to deal with this. And then she gave me the number of somebody that's in charge of securing properties. I called that person and they have not called me back. Um, so. I'm, I, I guess I just wanted to get permission to move forward in any way that I can. You know, financially and with the attorney. To deal with that.
Definitely.
Okay.
Um, that's grad school, yeah. Um, G Waste Water Department billing adjustment.
Uh, so as you know, I sent out a, um, a bunch of foreclosure notices. And one of them, uh, was the, um. MC, uh, Mattson, um, she did come in and. What happened back in twenty eighteen and twenty twenty. She had some sort of garden hose and. There were, um, well, I talked with Pam Blackman at Mean Water. There were a lot of, I won't, I, I won't try to go into all the details, but there, there were a lot of notes about this account. And that she should have had an adjustment at the time, she was supposed to go through, uh, the previous administrator. Um, and the commissioners, but that never happened, so. I'm recommending, so, um. There was a payment made to. Pay the rest of the balance, but I'm recommending that one thousand, two hundred and thirty-three just be written off. Because the water did not go through our wastewater system, the water went out onto the ground. It's the same thing that we did with an account, um. I don't know, a couple of months ago, um, that we, um, wrote off the amount that did not go through our system. Um, they have to pay the water district regardless, and they have done that. So, uh, I would just, um, like a motion to, um. Abate the one thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars on this account.
Um. So moved?
Removed.
All in favor?
Thank you. And then. Okay.
Maybe a report?
Are you ready?
Yeah.
The, um, report, madam?
Alright, I, we also put a draft warrant, um. All right, I, we also put a draft warrant, um, in your packet so that you could review that. We're asking that you meet next Tuesday night just to sign the warrant. Um, I feel like this is the final thing. There are a couple of articles in here toward the end about the downtown project and accepting, um, easements and about the transfer property. Um, the water dis, well, yeah, the, accepting the fifty percent.
Forty, forty-one, and forty-two.
You might wanna review those. Those are on the advice of our attorney. The rest of it is, are the, just the budget articles. Um, but I'm asking you that you review this so we can sign it, um, next Tuesday. And if you have any questions, let me know. Is that good? Next Tuesday at five?
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And then, okay. Oh, so we've secured, we've secured the apartment at the medical center for, um, Jared Austin. It will be fifteen hundred dollars a month. And I will negotiate that lease with Dinah Moyer. Okay, I'll set with that. And, oh, I had a request from somebody that we, we own a little piece of property over on, in Aries Cove on Pequot Road. And I don't even know his name. Oh, Jim Poole is asking if we have any interest in selling it. I, I didn't think that we, that we would.
Oh, where is it? It's between the Coke bottle and, uh, Dana Black.
The yellow.
Can I see it?
Yeah, it's the yellow.
But I personally don't think that we should just outright sell it to somebody that asks. If they're gonna sell a piece of property, it needs to be.
Probably.
But, um, but I would suggest that at, right now at this time, that we do not do so. At all. That's my recommendation.
Okay.
How big a piece is it? Point zero three acres. Not very big.
You know where the Coke bottle is? It's right beside there.
Yeah.
And then, um, I think Dana has mowed. I think he mows his piece that goes to the, um, Aries Cove.
Yeah.
It's in between, so it's very tiny. It's really not.
It's a goat path, basically.
Pretty much. I think the town, I used it years and years ago for
And they call it Haylanden?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Well, I'm over the end agreement. How much, uh, shore fundage does that have?
About ten feet, probably. I mean, it's not, it's just a little tiny.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah.
I mean, not enough to
Just for access.
Do anything, really, but I, I just would recommend that we do not.
At least with private property, you have to have what, a hundred and twenty-five feet of shore fundage, or you can sell it anyways. It's open, you must, not worth bothering. You can use it. And anybody can use it.
Nope.
That's all I have. Okay.
Yep.
Are we all good on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Wow, report of members. Make it short, folks.
I got nothing.
Nothing.
Tom?
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Sent you guys an email. I completely apologize.
What?
I'm sorry for being late.
Oh, that's fine. I knew that there was a softball game on the mainland today, so did you win? Did they win?
We played fun.
Oh, so, okay, end of season.
We did not win, but we played well. We played really well.
Oh, good.
We, we played a full five innings. They didn't mercy us out. And they were very, and they, they were very respectful. They stopped, they did station to station. They didn't steal bases once they got way ahead.
Yeah.
They intentionally, they intentionally didn't mercy us out. They were very, the sportsmanship was very good.
Oh, good. Well, congratulations to your graduating daughter.
Motion to adjourn.
Um, hold on a minute. Um.
Oh, God.
Hold on just a minute.
It's been a long day, man.
No, uh, yeah.
It'll be quick.
Um, we just need to decide, um, the next meeting is gonna be either on Monday, the tenth, or Wednesday, the twelfth, because of, um, election day is the eleventh. So it's up to you guys, whatever day, the tenth or the twelfth. Monday or Wednesday.
I understand. Yeah.
That doesn't matter.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, uh, when, when is the thing with, talking about the twelfth of June, right?
The what?
Twelfth of June.
Yes.
What's, what's the, uh, in there?
Heather Cox.
Heather Cox thing is on Wednesday.
Oh, that's a twelve?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess we better do it on the tenth then.
Yeah.
We can go to Thursday.
Or we can go to Thursday.
It was.
Speaker at the auditorium.
Heather Cox.
Oh, I'll bring birthday cake if we do it Thursday.
Okay, Thursday it is.
Is that yours?
You're the next week, right? You're in the next.
Okay, so what are we doing here?
Thursday, the thirteenth?
Thursday, the thirteenth.
At least, at least it's not Friday.
I would check, right, do it Monday, but.
I don't think I have anything.
So Monday or Thursday? Any preference?
Oh, I thought we picked Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
That's good to me. All right, lad.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Second, all in favor? Okay. So we'll see you guys.